We now have the meeting ordered. In compliance with the Federal Information Act, the notice of this meeting was transmitted by fax to the Sparkberry Herald Journal, posted on both the boards of town hall and on the town's website. We now have the meeting.
Father God, Lord, we just coach you today, Father. And Lord God, we're just asking you, Lord God, indeed, to give the wisdom and knowledge to our council and to our administrator, Father, Lord God, to be able to come and to be able to lead the town, not only in the way that you happen to be led, but the best for the people tonight, Father. So, Lord God, we're asking you to touch and move and minister upon our council and our administrator tonight, Lord. And, Lord God, we come to you as Jehovah's Jehovah, in God's protection, Lord. There are many needs and many requests in our town and our townspeople tonight, Father. And so, Lord God, we're just asking you, indeed, to open up the doors and windows of heaven for the very doors and windows of heaven, open up and show it out blessings upon your people and upon its landowners again, Lord. Touch us tonight, Father, we want us tonight, we ask it all in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have citizens' comments, we have Ms. Kim Phillips-Eesler. Put it down so we can hear you, okay?
Mayor and council, my name is Kim Phillips-Eesler. I stand before you tonight as a private citizen, not as a committee or commission member, nor am I being influenced by anyone. I want to make it perfectly clear that I am not attacking anyone personally. I am addressing issues concerning processes. I have four issues of great concern. Sanitation services. I believe Travis has done an excellent job and a bonus would be appropriate due to the extreme working conditions he has endured. I ask that the council explore and do a cost analysis of contracting the garbage service. Contracts can be negotiable and negotiated for favorable results for the town. I am not suggesting we eliminate Travis' employment. I believe his talents and his loyalty could be used in a different capacity. In the two years since I have returned to Packer, it has been painfully obvious that the sanitation needs exceed the capacity of one or two men. In addition, I ask that you revisit the contract Packer has with RCI for code enforcement. My question is, how can this council, in good faith, condone huge fines on citizens for code violations when the town cannot maintain quality garbage and litter removal? I support zoning ordinances, but I also believe the town should provide quality sanitation services. This issue has divided our community far too long. My second point is sewer service. The council is embarking on a comprehensive plan for the future of Packer. Once that plan is approved, then a master plan will be developed. I ask the council, when drafting the master plan, that the top priority be given to sewer services for all taxpayers in the town of Packer, not just the areas planned for new development. There are taxpayers in this town who have paid taxes for sewer service for sixty-plus years and have never received such services. The issue should be solved without any tax increase to the citizens. Where is the money that they paid for sewer services from the past sixty years? This issue will not only benefit the health and well-being of Packer, but should be top priority. Number three, traffic. I ask the council and the police department to work together to slow down the dump trucks and eighteen-wheelers that come through our town, either work with the state transport police to set up sting operations and/or start riding tickets. The fines, increased insurance, or employment ramifications will gain the town a reputation of no tolerance for speeding and reckless driving. This is not a bad thing. We owe it to our citizens to make the roads in our towns as safe as possible. My final request is when a citizen presents an issue to the council that this issue be addressed in writing and in a timely manner. I suggest thirty days is enough time to research and formulate a plan. Repeated tailoring of citizens' issues is unacceptable. These issues should be treated as an action item for the next council meeting. In conversations I've had with citizens, they've repeatedly said their concerns fall on deaf ears. It is my belief we must work together to address the current issues before any future plans can succeed. Respectfully submitted, Kim Phillips-Eesler.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, what report, sir? Have you? Over and over minutes, I'm sorry. Motion made the second, uh, minutes of June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four?
All second.
Motion made the second, call it favor. I'll vote, any motion for the trial?
To approve minutes for July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion made the, uh, except the minutes of July twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four?
A second.
Motion made the second, any questions? Call it favor, I'll vote, and now we have the department report.
If you can, I know this is new for a lot of you, but if you can try to have the microphone in front of you when you speak so to make sure that it projects out, so we're going to hear what you're saying. Um, there's some action items that I want to address, and I'm trying to get to this on the administrative report. The RFP from the Gateway side has been posted and the due date is August twelfth. I'd like to have a committee of no more than three council members to review the proposals when they come in. Uh, if you'd like, with the RFQ, if y'all wanted to have the same committee, uh, review both the RFP and the RFQ. Uh, but I'd like to have some other aisles besides just myself, um, when one is selected and then brought to council.
You need to go ahead and do that now?
It'd be great if y'all could.
Okay. Uh, any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Do we need to give any more, just one?
Coming up to three.
Rick?
I'll help.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brackler.
When we need you.
Ma'am? So, these, um, proposals will come in on August twelfth. And once I have those, I'll send those out to the two or three people who were, who were looking at them. Um, then we'll have a chance to kind of meet together if y'all want to. Uh, and then once y'all make a selection, then at the next council meeting, it will be in September, then y'all say this is the one that we've selected. Okay. Uh, the next item here is the new public works department has all the necessary equipment, um, so far. Uh, there may be a couple more things that they may be needing on there. Uh, the two employees have been hired, and last week was their first full week. Um... Uh, the groundswoman is working on his C E L class B license, the S C pesticide License. Uh, they're currently working on cutting, edging the areas around, uh, the town. As they get more comfortable with routine, they will add additional work projects. Um, and the ground labor has already filled in on the sanitation truck. Uh, he worked yesterday, today, and he'll be working tomorrow with Travis, um, to, to help him get up the trash and tighten them in. Uh, the next item that's on there is the sanitation truck is currently down and employed. Um, as of today, uh, we've just, uh, offered an appointment to someone else who lives in the town. Uh, they'll be coming in tomorrow for orientation and due paperwork, and they'll start officially on Monday. So Travis will have some of my full-time work with him. Uh, ACOG, uh, have been, have done their act, uh, their work on the updating of the zoning ordinance. They have asked if you would like this to be primarily done by the planning commission or be a mixture of the two councils, like we did with the steering committee for the plan in Packer. Uh, but I need a decision from council. Um, I brought this up at the last meeting, just looking for, do you want to do it with a steering committee, like you had three council members, three planning commission members, uh, and make them do it from the public? Um, or do you want it to be entirely done by the planning commission and then bring it to you for approval?
I'd love to, uh, be part of a steering.
Anybody else? Again?
Okay.
When will, when will that, uh, when will that be read?
Um, is, is, is up to y'all, so you can actually, if you wanted to do a thing, they can probably, I'm wondering if they can set up in such a way that the planning commission plus two council members, would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay. And so why should I have to?
The attorney general said that we were going to start with the planning commission in August.
Okay. So it'll just be, it'll be the planning commission plus two council members, and they'll be talking. And we'll be monthly at the planning commission meetings. And so we'll have to, um, I mean, they'll be treated as traditional planning commission meetings with public notice and everything.
Uh, we might need somebody else in here, we might need one more, I might have to buy Alice one of those meetings.
Okay. Will you set it up as an alternate, if you'd like to have someone as an alternate?
Well, I, yeah, anybody? I'll do, if I can get a list of the dates.
Sure. It'll be the, should be the same as the planning commission, but I'll make sure everybody gets the rest of their day. Uh, the audit is finally completed, and at the September meeting, you will receive a, uh, presentation on the audit. Wanted to publicly state this, the town basically sent out code enforcement summons that had incorrect information on them. The date and location of violations were incorrect. Those, uh, summons, uh, that were sent out will be voided, and new summons will be sent out with correct information.
Who, uh, who typed the summons?
The summons were typed up by one of the officers. Um, Officer, um, Chad Hensley, Hensley. He typed them up, and what I talked to him about was the law track system is, can sometimes be a little bit convoluted or confusing to look at. It's very similar to Lotus One, Two, Three. Um, but he put the wrong information on there, he owns up to it, that won't happen again.
Is it legal to reissue the summonses?
Yes. So what we'll do is the other ones will be voided, and new ones will be put out there, yes.
So the summons just had a number on them, or they're just? Piece of paper, I mean, they weren't tickets?
Yeah.
It's essentially a ticket, right?
Sir?
It's essentially a ticket, right?
A summons is just for them to come into court, it's just a?
Right. The summons stated you can pay this fine, or you can ask for a jury trial, or just speak to the judge, correct?
Correct.
So we can just void that and issue brand-new ones?
That's exactly what's happening.
Now, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
The ones that I've seen, every single one of them, regardless of how many issues may or may not arose, one particular thing, just grass wasn't cut, versus several, several situations on the property. Everybody equally got a five hundred dollar fine. Is that what, every single one of those summons was a five hundred dollar fine?
The, the way it's set up in, in the ordinances that y'all have is that a misdemeanor is five hundred dollars plus court costs. Uh, that was something that was added on by the judge, uh, earlier, I think, last year. And so unless there is a specific amount for each violation, it automatically reverts back to that five hundred dollar amount. So if council wanted to create a new, uh, basically fine system, and so you had a different amounts in there, then that can be changed. But as of right now, without that schedule of what the fines will be, it automatically reverts back to the five hundred dollars plus court cost.
So can we put that on the agenda, to put a new fee schedule, fine schedule, prior to these summons is going back out? When would we? I think that would be appropriate because I, you know, somebody didn't cut their grass, five hundred dollars, but then somebody that didn't pick up their trash, they had cars, they didn't cut their grass, trees in the yard, multiple things, it's five hundred dollars for them too. I just think that the system is a little bit, you know, to me, it seems like it's more of a problem. Even if you, again?
Just so you know, this is just, I think this is public information. I've only think we issued, I think, one or two actual tickets they've actually paid in court. We work with them as much as possible. The people who are, who are actually paying these fines, but the ones who are saying, we absolutely refuse to do it.
Just refuse to pay the five hundred dollar fine?
They refuse to do any of the work at the property. So we've got people who will call in and say, listen, I'm out of town, I'm, I'm a landlord who lives outside of town, and I'm not going to be here for a couple weeks. Can you give me some time? Absolutely. Because at the end of the day, they come in, they pay their ticket, the problem is still there. And so then we have to go back out and reissue them another summons.
So you, you're saying that every one of these people that received the summons currently, they've not fixed the situation that they originally found at the property, the code enforcement found the property. Those, those circumstances have not been fixed by any, by these people that, that received these summons?
No. So what we're saying is, is, is when we first shoot the issue that's out there, we, um, uh, we send them a notice. They have fifteen days to fix whatever the issue is. After fifteen days, we'll go out there and look at it again, if nothing's happened, then a summons get issued. At that point, they have sixty days until the court day. If any time during the time they first got the notice to the date of court that they fixed that, the ticket goes away.
So is there, is there a specific timeline after the, the first notice, the fifteen-day notice? There's, is there a certain timeline at which you need to issue the, the summons? Or can you wait three or four months?
So this, the ordinance is saying that after fifteen days, that you are currently, you're in violation, they've given you another time. And it doesn't happen immediately after that fifteen days.
Right.
So it's, so we create, once that, that fifteen days goes by, it's the next time. We've also limited the amount of time that RCI spends here. Um, there are currently no law, they can do, they can spend no more than two thousand dollars in hourly rate per month.
Right.
So they'd only just do it once a month. And so he, whatever he's got, and maybe have built up a little bit, he'll go out there and look at those that are out there.
So Hensley's, Hensley's bragging on these summonses, issuing all these summonses to, to the citizens. And he's visually inspected the property, or has he done anything other than just typing the summonses? Has he went to each property himself to, to witness the situation still existing? Or has he communicated with anybody, or is he just typing the summonses and handing them out?
So what it, so after that fifteen days, they're in violation. And so after that fifteen days, he's got notification from RCI saying the problem is still there. And so that point, he writes that ticket, but this has been fifteen days.
So if RCI says the problem still exists, Hensley doesn't have to go look at it, we just take RCI's word for it, and then the summons is issued?
That's how it has been done, but they also go out there, they have, they have been known to go out there and double-check things as well. And what also happens is, is the, the day before court, RCI typically drives around to the, all the properties that are all out there and sees if anybody has fixed the problem. If they have, then they're taken off the list.
I, I think we need to review the, the fee, the fines.
Sure.
Prior, I mean, I, I, I thought the ordinance said up to five hundred, I didn't realize it was only five hundred. I think that seems a little unfair to, to some of the citizens that had minor problems, like their grass wasn't cut versus they had a junkyard in their front yard, or something of that sort. You know, there's, I don't know if you want to pick and choose which aisle is worse, but if there's multiple violations on a property, then I think the fees, the fines could go up higher, as opposed to just having your grass wasn't cut. You see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I think so, they already, and, and multiplicity should, should add up to be higher than, than just fifteen days and you cut your grass. How soon are those, uh, uh, grades are going to go out?
I believe it's for, I'm not sure if it's for September or October, but I'll have to go back and look. Uh, the only problem is, is you would need two council meetings to be able to, uh, put that into place on there.
Some of these summonses were for, for, for circumstances back in March. So we've waited six months to issue a summons, or four months, excuse me. Do we have, I mean, is there, is there an issue with waiting longer, is, is, are we not allowed to do that, or?
We're just trying to get the town cleaned up, that's, that's the reason.
I understand, I, I mean, I, I, I feel strongly towards cleaning the town up, but I also think we should probably review the fines. You know, now, now that we're going to start issuing summonses, you know, we should probably review the fines. I think it's a little unfair that it's five hundred dollars no matter what you did or did not do.
And if you know Judge Smith, you know that she doesn't do that lightly. And like I said, I'm only aware of about two who actually received the fines, because she tries to work with them as well. Uh, but typically, I mean, you, if you're coming to court, you've been given seventy-five days for the time that you got a notice to fix the problem.
You mean, you only know of two that received a, a, a five hundred dollar fine?
No, no, Vicki, that actually had, had.
Okay.
I agree, the five hundred dollar fines sounds like a lot, but it's essentially a warning. Um, you know, if they just need grass cut, well, they're going to cut their grass instead of pay the five hundred. Um, it does show that we're serious about cleaning the town up. Um, it, you know, maybe worth looking at a fee schedule. The problem with that is then we get into this gray area of, well, they got a three hundred dollar fine, I got a four hundred dollar fine. Your house, I think, looks worse, whereas if it's flat, then we don't have to make those judgment calls of, well, you have two cars in your yard, you have one, you know, you get into a lot more areas of, of fighting. Uh, I don't want anyone to be fined, but with how lenient we've been, um, again, these fines are only actually paid for by people that have no intentions of, of cleaning up their yard. Uh, we may want to think about getting into a complicated fee schedule. As long as we're committed to giving, you know, residents every opportunity and as much lenience as we possibly can.
And, and I encourage you, if you've got residents who are calling you or who are complaining about any of this, please let us know, because we work with them. We do whatever we can, because I, I tell people over and over again, we're, we're not doing this for money, because if you pay your fine, the next day it's still a problem, and you've still got to take care of it. I would much rather figure out either a volunteer group, a church group, or somebody that can help you out and clean that up than to get a fine, because that doesn't fix anything.
So the summons that they're receiving, so if the, if the code enforcement officer observed a broken-down car without a tag on it, no car cover, that's one misdemeanor, because that's, that's a separate violation. And then there's the grass wasn't cut, so that's a second misdemeanor. So, so potentially, there could be twenty-five hundred dollars worth of fines on there. But what I'm saying is, is each, each one that I saw, some had multiple, some had one, but it was five hundred blanket.
That's correct.
That's what I'm talking about. So either the officer didn't do his due diligence and noticed how many misdemeanors were there, or he just said five hundred blanket. You see what I'm saying? I think it's worth visiting a, a fee schedule or a fine schedule, so we can identify if, if, if it's, if we're going to stay at five hundred, fine. But if it's seventy-five dollars for the first time, the second time is a hundred fifty, you know, a step process, so we can show how we're trying to work with you. This is, this is the way we're going to handle it, softly, medium, and then harshly. I, I'm sorry, this is your third offense, you know, here we go. Then maybe five hundred.
I think the step fee is a great idea. So it doesn't get into the, it doesn't get into the gray of how bad is your yard, it's just first, second, third offense, I think it's great.
Yeah.
The one that did ended up getting a, I remember one, I won't mention the address to the name, uh, but they received a summons, they didn't show up to court. At that point, they were issued a bench warrant because they'd shown up to court. They were arrested, put in jail, they got bail, came back, paid their fee, still haven't fixed the problem, start the process over again.
Right.
It's, and, and, and I get a call, there are two neighbors who live beside this, this person, and there's one neighbor who calls me every week or every other week about this particular problem.
Tony probably does, how many times?
I, I don't know.
Let's, uh, let's definitely step fee system on the agenda.
I'll put together, I'll put together a fee schedule and send it out to you in advance, um, so you have a chance to kind of look at it. I'm trying to get it out there much earlier than I should get the agenda out, so that y'all have a chance to kind of look it over and see.
We're going to, we're going to postpone the reissuing of the summonses until afterwards?
If that's what council wants to do.
Has he already sent some out?
I don't know if they've already been sent out yet, I'll have to check on that and see. I will have that answer for you.
Do, do we need to amend the agenda to vote on this? Yeah, if you want to do that. We don't, I mean, how, how, what schedule we're going to go with, I mean? Well, I mean, to, to pause the summonses. Oh, okay. If we're, if we're avoiding the ones that are already set out, but?
So there were approximately thirty-seven that were sent out. Um, some of them have been rechecked since then and found that they were in compliance. Um, and I think others are working on making sure they get into compliance.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, how about this, how about if we, if we, this is, September is court, right? So September twelfth, I think, is court date, we'll have, we'll have another council meeting before then. So if we approve a, a fee schedule or fine schedule, excuse me, if we approve a fine schedule, I'm sure that we could, you know, the judge would understand that this is our wishes moving forward?
Yeah, I believe I can bring up to the judge at the next, uh, court session and say, this is what council is planning on doing, and so you may want to, um, reduce their fine amounts to what the council's looking for.
If we have a unanimous, unanimous vote, the next, if, on the first reading of something like this, if it's unanimous, the judge will take us serious. Awesome.
Do you believe so?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's good for us, these fines are really only being issued to people that just don't want to work with us. So I don't think anyone that wants to clean their yard.
It, it does, it does come across as steep on there, but like I said, we only have actually, there's only the two that have actually had to pay.
Right.
Because we need to try to work with them.
The fine could be five thousand, or ten thousand, or a million, if, you know, if it's high grass, or.
If there's a particular property, um, that's, uh, near town hall, where they just let it go, um, completely to pot. And, um, he said, if you give me two or three months and here's my plan, this is each week I'm going to work on it, you can check on this progress, we'll work with you. And that's what we want to see happening, because I, you know, a fine doesn't solve anything for us. It's just that stick to try to get people to, to do something. But fine, fee schedule? And I'll let the judge know. Uh, early this year, council requested, uh, to survey and list the property on Sunset Coleman Circle. Uh, I never received or sponsored from one company, so another company has been chosen at a cost of nine hundred dollars. They are planning to start first of next week. Um, uh, but does the council, one thing that y'all didn't select, and I didn't know if there was any, I, I was just going to pick a commercial realtor, you don't have a particular one, I want to make sure that we're not being playing favoritism over one versus the other, who's actually going to be giving the commission. Does it matter? I can just kind of flip a coin or reach out to the Realtors Association and say, can you just give me a name for a commercial realtor?
I would just randomly pick someone.
Okay.
Whoever calls you back first?
Sir?
Whoever calls you back first? Yeah. I have no presence. I said whoever calls you back first.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, number ten on there, uh, just want to let you know, this is just FYI, that small little piece of property that y'all have looked at, um, someone wanted to sell us for twenty thousand dollars, it's a piece of two hundred fifty square feet. Uh, that is not a, a, a mistype there, that was correct, it's two hundred fifty square feet. Um, but we ended up being able to get that property for, uh, two hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. It was a, it was a parking space at T W M Center. Um, the contract for Stormwater Project, um, I just got the message, I'm going to have the mayor sign the contract next week. So once that starts, uh, they'll be, they'll be beginning of that, um, that Stormwater Project. Uh, bulk waste drop-off is coming up in August third, this Saturday. Uh, we are currently looking for volunteers to assist with the drop-off day. Please contact town hall if you have volunteers interested in helping. Uh, number seventeen on there, uh, trash pickup will move to three days, starting later this month. I included a postcard for you to review prior to going out, it is right the next day in your pack. You'll be sent out to every mail box in Packer that costs probably thirteen hundred dollars, including postage. We will also post on our Facebook page, but residents are encouraged to put their carts out the night before to ensure the pickup occurs on their scheduled pickup day. Do y'all have any problem with the postcard that's, we've got put on there? You can't see it right now, because it's, it's, I just printed it black and white, but the color version, um, all the streets that are changing are highlighted on there. If it's not contracted, it's not changing, it stays exactly the way it is. I just, the copy that I've emailed you has the color version. It is not to scale, and we did make sure that all the fine is, uh, ADA compliant. And if you'd like, I can change the date, it currently has the twelfth of August on. And if you'd like, I can change the date, it currently has the twelfth of August on there. Um, we can move that back a week to the nineteenth, if you think that will give them more time, uh, to get ready for the change.
I'd maybe move it back, wait and see if we can do it for these now.
Okay. We'll change it to the nineteenth. Any other changes on there, we good with that? Um, the chipper is fixed, it went out today, it'll go out tomorrow, and it'll be chipping limbs throughout the town. Uh, we were already, he's already kinda giving me an idea of where he's gonna be going, but, um, you can tell residents who have called you or said something to you that it's, it'll be out tomorrow. Uh, it'll eventually at the point where it's two days a week, uh, but at least for now, it'll be like a day to day and a half, um, of chipping.
How, how are we doing that now? Do they call in, get them a list, or does Travis just look and see where he needs to?
What he typically does is, when he does the trash route Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, he kinda makes a mental picture of where things are on the route. And, but he, it's my understanding that he, he starts on the route, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday route, to see what needs to be done. So, it's not just, we've gotta email back. We do get emails about people saying, can you make sure to pick up my trash or my, my limbs? But that does not mean that if you don't send an email, that doesn't mean you won't come out there.
So, you don't, you don't have to call because Travis is gonna be looking visually as to what needs to be picked up?
People go his normal route, and if there's something on his normal route, he'll pick it up. And keep in mind that if there's a resident who has a lot of limbs, if y'all remember back then, uh, last year, uh, we passed new, uh, or y'all passed, uh, new guidelines. They're not gonna spend more than fifteen minutes in each location, uh, so they can make sure to give all locations more time. Now, once they get to the point where there's not many left, then they can spend more time on one particular location.
Will it be going back to that location?
He goes back based on the route, so once he goes through, I mean, he'll drive on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, trash route. And then we'll get to the very end, and then once he's done, he comes back and starts back over again.
Okay, what I'm saying is, uh, some, uh, since we hadn't had the chipper in, online for a while, some of them piled up, you know? And we probably need to go back more than one time to give some of these limbs a fifteen minute time.
And that's, if we're, we're trying to get to the point where it's a three day, so that he's got two full days of chipping on there. Uh, and now that, uh, you know, once we gotta go through with this, we're four people in public works, uh, there is a possibility that we can end up taking another person off of public works that have, uh, Travis and two other people who are chipping together, speed it up.
I feel certain that the, uh, fifteen minute time limit was probably passed whenever everything was current.
Functional.
And not behind. I personally don't have no problem if we go in order or however he sees fit, if it takes more than fifteen minutes to go ahead and finish the job, until we get this caught up. Uh, that's just my opinion.
I think the public works have probably got them to get caught up too. If the chipper's running, that truck should follow, everybody get out and they'll pick it up.
It's been a while since we've been current.
No, not.
It's always been behind, and, and I think part of the reason that that was put in place was there were, um, several properties where they would clear cut their entire property. And it's been three days, they just one location.
I mean, properties like that, we're not supposed to pick up anywhere.
You're supposed to, um, or if they do it themselves.
If they did it themselves, yeah, sure.
And there are some that they, I, I don't know if they did it themselves, all I know is there are limbs out there that.
I, I'm saying, you know, a show of faith to the citizens, knowing it's running, we could probably put all four of our employees towards picking up, picking up the limbs to get it caught up.
Okay.
I think, I think out of respect to everybody that's had concerns, it might be a good thing for the next couple of weeks, have all four employees jump on it. Providing it's not raining or something of that sort, you know, but.
Travis isn't doing it by himself.
No, no, he's got, um, we've, we're having someone float it. But the chipper has not been in operation for about two or three weeks now.
So, they can, okay, well, listen, stop.
Yeah, I would, uh, if, if I had limbs laying on the street and they come out and got half of them and spent fifteen minutes and then pulled off, I'd get real upset.
Okay.
Uh, so I personally think that, uh, until we get this caught up, that, uh, I don't have an issue if they go ahead and do the job right the first time, if I don't have to go back.
Okay, if that's, if that's what council wants to do, I can just have them.
I think Travis can get caught up.
Just stay until it's done.
And address, uh, the manpower issue as needed, if we need to put all four of them in out there for two or three weeks on their, uh, days that they're out picking up trash or cutting grass. Uh, get this addressed and get, get it cleaned up, you want to clean up the town, that's a good start.
Well, let me ask you this, if, cause we still have trash pickup Monday through Thursday. If during that time we still do, um, landscape or ground screen does their own thing, it's just that Thursday, Friday, I put all four people on that grid.
That's not work.
I wanna make sure that the new people are familiar with the safety hazards of that chipper. Just to, just to point that out, let's maybe give them a little pre-task training.
Do they wear gauze? I know of one time.
Well, there's safety handles and bars and stuff, if you're right, PPE and such.
Well, you still should be, what you, your personal protective.
If you, and you, I'm just asking you, if you've got some from your job that you work at, I would love to get some recommendations on some stuff. There, there hasn't been that sort of thing for the town when I got here. And I would like to have some standard safety procedures and PPE requirements and, uh, I mean, I'm used to bigger towns where they'll have like a, once a month, a safety kind of fifteen minutes kinda go through some stuff.
I don't, I don't necessarily mean like hard hats and face seals and such, what, what I, what I mostly mean by, they're picking up limbs off the side of the room, they should have a level four cut proof glove. Because they remind me of busted bottles and glass or, you know.
Debris.
Yeah, you know.
Within the pile of trash, so.
More so specifically what I'm talking about is that chipper has a safety bar on the back of it, if you push it, it'll stop it. As well as if you do push it, it'll stop it, but it tears the engine up when you do that. So, but what I mean by that is make sure that Travis or you or somebody that's familiar with the, the workings of the machine, sh- you know, show the safety protocols of it. How far to stay away from it, how to, how to, you know, uh, enter the material into the chipping thing. Where the, the cutoff is if, if something was to happen, no loose clothing, things like that, you know, I'm just saying.
No, I, I completely agree. Okay, so we're gonna agree with you on that, cause I, I've, cause there's, if you put in a limb and don't realize the branches are behind you, it starts pulling you in.
If it pulls your safety vest or your shirt on button or your coat tail or something of that sort, then you're going in with it.
Uh, town hall renovations are nearly completed, um, to avoid, um, complete redesign of the front door, the maximum occupancy of the front room. So, this room right down is to be a maximum forty-nine people. I'd like for council to consider giving the former desk to another municipality in Sparkler County that would like to have it. I've already reached out to a couple municipalities who would love to have this, um, and what I'll just gonna do is send out pictures and, and dimensions and first come, first served. Um, but that's up to you because it's your, your property. I don't see a need for the town to keep it.
Yeah, I would say let it go, it's just gonna be in the way.
Are y'all okay with that?
I'll make the motion to, uh, give it away, give it away.
Okay.
Yeah.
What happened to it, it looks like it got sanded down.
It's a staircase.
From the light reflection.
Um, that's all I've got, other stuff is just about events that are coming up, uh, I'll pack up River Fest, uh, and then the last farmer's market and, uh, movies in the park. Or Movies by the River will be Saturday, August tenth. I do wanna make sure that, um, to say the events would not be possible without sponsorships and partnerships, uh, like Sparkler County Foundation, Duke Energy, the Rylands, River Bend, Benjamin E. May's family, uh, Resource Center. KD, Trilawyers, Packer Mills, Baptist Church for providing the sound system, Montgomery Memorial for providing the volunteers and the setup. Um, vendors have noticed a big increase in the attendance, both by, uh, uh, vendors and shoppers at the farmer's market. So, we were considering this being the last year for the farmer's market, but it's seen a, a big uptick in the amount of people that came out for it.
Can I read over the chief's report, Dan?
Uh, chief's report, um, June twenty twenty-four had a hundred and twenty-six calls for our service, um, eleven hundred thirteen officer issued events. Uh, they've changed the national night outs operation to Tuesday night, October first, ordered to avoid conflicts with several other local events associated with kids going back to school and to take advantage of cooler weather. Uh, we hope everyone will plan to join us then, um, even given how dry the summer had been up to July fourth holiday. We had very little issues to deal with that weekend of the fourth itself. So, we would like to, you to, would like to thank you to the community for celebrating responsibly. Uh, you did wanna let me know that the new Axon cameras have also been. I'm sorry, the new Axon cameras, the new Axon body cameras.
Okay.
Have you board the commission in? No.
No, no board commission, no, I'm finished with this.
You bid.
Motion to approve first reading to annex eleven eight six highway one seventy-six.
Motion to, uh, annex, uh, property on, uh, one seventy-six, highway one seventy-six, uh.
I'm gonna have to look that up, where's that at exactly, I didn't have a chance to.
If you're coming down one fifty to one seventy-six, the up on the hill, the red barn there, it's owned by Charles Whitehead, uh, at the very end of the property. Um, they've sectioned off three point six acres of that, and that's what's being sold off to, uh, Enistop Gas, which is gonna open up a new, uh, retail location. The only issue that may, I'm gonna talk to, um, Acons along this, M A F C, is, it's not adjacent, except through a right of way to get to there. And I wanna make sure that that will work, or we may have to ask, uh, Charles Whitehead to get, to take a ten foot strip of his property to be able to access to that property.
You mean access, can I get?
Yeah, we'll have to do, that's correct, it's a, a ten foot strip that we'd have to cap annex of his property to get to that. I think you can go ahead and do the, um, a motion if you wanna do forward on that, so that I can check more into that between now and the next council meeting.
We have a motion, it's a.
A second.
Hope you made it second, we need to hear the quit, hold it away.
Uh, consider an update to, um, to work at town hall for a handicap lift. Uh, at the last council meeting, uh, everything is all approved, uh, and the intention was to have a, a removable ramp at the end of the council, uh, stage here. Um, that did not work out for the, it is fifteen inches, and there's not enough room to do the ramp to come out. Uh, and so what code is requiring us is to have the lift, not excited about it, but it does raise the project cost to, um, the total project cost to two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, it was a nine thousand dollar add-on.
Patrick, I just have a question.
Yes.
How did that get past them? How did they not know that beforehand and all their dotting eyes and crossing their t's that that would be code?
I can't answer that, um, I, I do assume you're saying, when we were, when Lyles and I were all talking about this, we thought everything was gonna be fine. Uh, when our building inspector came in and looked at it, uh, he said, no, that would not be.
Which, which part doesn't, I don't understand, the ramp we intended on the building doesn't pass code?
Well, the, the ramp was never intended on building, so if you look at the plans itself, the plans, uh, have a handicap lift in it, it doesn't have a ramp on there.
Oh.
So, that was a change on there, and the, the problem was is the ramp needed to come straight all the way out. Uh, and to go fifteen feet that way, you'd go through that wall, and to go fifteen feet out this way, you'd have to go through this hole.
So, the, the building code says it has to be a fifteen foot straight ramp?
That's what, it can't be a, a platform, a turning radius platform, sixty inches and then the ramp turn and go in different direction. That was my understanding on there, cause you would have to go out that way and then back down this way, and I believe, uh, you may have to put some type of platform, uh, in the corner there, uh, to come all the way out and then back here. But the idea that we were originally looking at was removal ramp was not appropriate.
So, is this, this potential lift going to be an obstruction when it's not in use? Are, are you gonna be able to flow through here, is there gonna be steps?
I mean, it's just gonna be a five by five box that should kinda sit over there, and if you, if, if you want, no plants in front of it.
So, there's a, that will be blocked with the lift?
You, yeah, you, you won't be able to go off to the side.
Okay.
Uh, we've got the crime scene tape up there, um, just in case, we didn't wanna start right off the side.
Did, so it's portable? Did we explore?
No, no, it will stay there.
Did we explore the cost on running it to the corner and down?
I don't know the cost on that or if that was approved, cause that was one of the things we had talked about, and it didn't sound like the inspector was okay with that.
I mean, if that is, that is done, if, if he.
I, I don't understand why, it wouldn't be acceptable if you can make a turn, you got enough room to make a turn, they're gonna make a, enough, uh, uh, one inch, uh, drop for per, you know? You know, per, a one foot per inch drop, I don't see, you know, I don't, I think we got that room over there to do it.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I can reach back out, I'll send an email out tonight to both Lyles and to our building inspector and see if, what the possibility is or why they're saying it's not a possibility to go out to the wall and go switch back, uh, back, uh, down the wall all the way up this way.
I mean, even if it had a rail on?
It ain't the cost, I don't know what the cost, the, the difference in the cost of that and, uh, the lift we're talking about.
Yeah, early on, I was very concerned about having some large piece of technology over here, and, you know, for sure that it could not without it.
I can also get pictures of what it's gonna look like too.
But my issue is, is we wouldn't be able to use that as an heat rest if the handicap lift was over there.
That's, well.
We wouldn't be able to go out that way.
You'd go up there and press the button and get out in fifteen inches.
Right.
Be like an elevator, real short. But, no, it wouldn't be blocked off.
And if you had to get out because of a fire or something, you would, it would be incumbent, yeah.
I mean, this, if this passes code, we're, you know, in terms of fire, uh, for the travel distance, you're gonna get out of here and then get back down.
That would be the quickest way.
Neither option's great, but.
You're gonna get a cost difference, right?
I'll get cost on both options, well, I've got cost already on the, I've already got cost options for the, the, the lift, as you see. But I'll also get pictures of exactly what it's gonna look like, and I'll get cost options, uh, on the ramp.
If it's, if it's not a feasible idea for the ramp for the building inspector, I'd very much like to see what code is in register.
I can.
Why it's not an option?
If you'd like, I can, I can bring our building inspector to the next meeting.
No, that's okay, just.
I just get, I'm, I get a, just like a, a report from him saying what he's, he's wanting.
Yeah, that's all I need, I wanna be able to read what we're being held to.
Sure. You wanna table that or just no vote on that?
Yeah, I want to table that. Make a motion, Karen. Second. Well, if you made a second table, quit, I'll make, I'll move.
With some of these changes that have come up, uh, I thought it was appropriate to, uh, make an amendment to the budget to allow for some of these changes on here, uh, so we don't end up going over budget. For small little things, I think it would be okay, but for some of these, it's, it's much larger than, uh, a few thousand dollars here and there. So, um, the, the, the four items on here is the, the gateway sign, um, so it would be thirty-five thousand dollars, and this is the gateway sign that will be, you see the monument signs that are out on, uh, one seventy-six, the intersection of one fifty, and the ones at nine. We currently have an RFP out to put in another. We currently have an R F P out to put in another sign at the intersection of one fif, I'm sorry, West Main Street, one seventy-six. Uh, I've got an estimated cost in there of approximately thirty-two thousand dollars from the designer. Uh, it may have been a little bit more, uh, and so I put in thirty-five to cover that. And that would come out of hospitality funds, which is what y'all had looked at, and we were looking at this last year. Uh, the next item on there is the, um, of, of course, I mentioned the, the town hall renovations on there, uh, up front. But then the, uh, Norfolk Southern, the five-and-a-half acres that's behind I G A, uh, they'd like to see the design done first before we start moving forward on that project. They've agreed to provide the town fifteen thousand dollars for the cost of that design. Um, but I wanted to make sure that's allocated in the budget. Um, and then the last thing on there is the total cost of the stormwater project will be a hundred and six thousand dollars, a hundred and six thousand four twenty. Y'all had previously had set that up as a hundred thousand. It's a little bit more to cover the cost of ACOG managing grant. I would have no problem managing the grant myself, except for the fact that it's a C D B G grant. Um, they're a lot more complicated than I'm used to.
I think a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual budget, second. Motion made in second to approve, uh, having to budget, uh, correct, uh, anything else, any questions? All in favor, all opposed.
This, um, particular item on here, uh, this next item here is a recommendation from the planning commission. Um, in your packet, it may not make sense because, um, you don't have color on there, which is why I provided another piece of paper that was in here, that I didn't put in the back. It's a separate piece of paper. If you'll notice, on that separate piece of paper, under retail restaurant, general retail two thousand or less, and general retail two thousand or fifteen thousand, is currently, there's nothing there. So, if you're in the neighborhood edge area and you wanna put in a retail business, it has to be under fifteen thousand square feet. That doesn't really make sense. You can put a big box store. Sir?
Has to be over currently.
Yes, that's, you're right. It has to be over your, uh, the fifteen thousand. Um, and which doesn't really make sense, 'cause you could put in a big box store, but you can't put in a cafe. Um, and so, what the planning commission is recommending is to go ahead and add in the two thousand square foot or less or the two thousand, fifteen thousand square feet.
Make a motion to approve on first reading, it is on the ordinance, chapter three, section four.
Did the planning commission approve this?
Planning commission approved that one.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Motion made in second, uh, uh, commend the zoning ordinance, uh, chapter three, section four. Permit, any other questions?
Just explain it to me a bit more, 'cause I just don't fully understand it.
In the neighborhood edge area.
Right.
If you have a location, if you, if you wanna open up a business, uh, and I kinda give you, uh, the town just recently did a, a rezoning for the Satellite Depot. Uh, so Satellite Depot is now a neighborhood edge zone. Um, you can put, you can bulldoze the building down and put a law mart there, but you can't put a retail location. You can't put a Satellite Depot there. You can't put a florist, which originally was there. And the reason is, is when, when the zoning ordinance was created, this was a typo, most likely. That you can put in a, a, a massive building, but you can't put in a cafe right there. And it doesn't make sense, because neighborhood edge is a transition zone from urban center to residential. And it would make sense that you could put in a cafe there, but not a big box store there. I think it was just a typo. But because it's in here, we have to go by it.
Was it because of the Satellite Depot building?
Is that the reason of, of the change? No, this was something that the planning commission had, uh, requested the change.
The planning commission came to you and asked you to put this up for a meeting?
Yes.
The motion made in second, any other questions? All in favor, all opposed. Consider it first reading in doc, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, town of Pacul, the comprehensive plan.
I'll now have Jeff Gilbo with the Appalachian National Committee that's gonna present us.
Good evening, Joe. Good evening, thank you. So, we've been working with the town for about a year now on comprehensive plans. Our introductory kickoff meeting, I think, was August of last year. Uh, so, we have been working with the town, with the committee, uh, with the public, uh, on this project. And the planning commission recommended approval, recommended that council approve this at their meeting last month. Um, just to go back to a little background, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, is the officially adopted policy document that establishes the town's goals for the future and provides direction for decisions affecting the use and development of land, preservation of open space, transportation, uh, economic growth, uh, public facilities and services, et cetera. Uh, it's a twenty-year comprehensive plan, uh, document will need to be reviewed in five years and rewritten in ten years in accordance with state law. Uh, the fact is that make it comprehensive, uh, it covers the entire area of the town. Um, integrates authentic and diverse community participation, spanning the full range of perspectives and interests. Uh, time horizon is long range, um, provides general guidance on where growth and various land uses should occur and provides a framework for achieving a sustainable future at the local level with strategies that aim to align community, environment, and economy. Uh, by state law, there's ten sections that are required to be in there, um, we address those in the plan document. Uh, main piece that comes out of it is the future land use map, which you see here. Uh, there's also a copy of that in the document, uh, that you received earlier. Uh, divides the, basically, this is a picture of how you think the community will develop in the future in terms of land uses around town. Uh, talks about residential uses, um, by this map, that's about thirty-six percent of projected future land use. That's mainly single-family, a little bit of multifamily. Uh, commercial, right now projected to be about five percent of projected future land use, uh, that's in the red on the map. Uh, mixed use are these corridors that you see here, mainly along one fifty-three, uh, South Pine Street. Uh, those are areas that we anticipate, uh, will probably turn commercial in the future. There are probably houses that will be converted to small offices, things like that. Uh, so that, basically, recognize that, and so if somebody comes in for a zoning, you've already addressed that. Uh, institutional, those are things like churches and government offices and utilities, uh, that's in the blue. Uh, the big piece there is the river preserve, um, and then you've got cemeteries and churches, like I said, and government offices. That amounts to about ten percent of projected future land use. Uh, industrial is about thirty-eight percent of Pacul's land area. Uh, most of that, of course, is, uh, the quarry and the new quarry, uh, and also some, uh, projected use along one seventy-six. Uh, and then outdoor recreation, which is the green category here. Uh, a lot of that's the Pacul Milliken property, which, when you look at the focus areas, section of the comprehensive plan, uh, we've addressed things like zip lines and outdoor recreational opportunities in the flats area, uh, things like that, uh, would be appropriate for there. Um, also, as part of this project, benchmark planning was involved in doing a master plan for several focus areas. Uh, the Pacul Milliken property, the amphitheater, the old mill site, the flats downtown. And so, there's, um, a lot of information there regarding those specific areas. Uh, in terms of public input, uh, we have had a good deal of public input as we've gone through the process. Um, started actually with the C D B G public hearing that we did for the stormwater grant, where we did a survey for that. Uh, and we also had some public input specifically, uh, in person. Uh, so, we added that into our public input for the comprehensive plan. Uh, then we did a specific survey for the comprehensive plan, which is now has over two hundred individual responses. Uh, we had a working committee with, uh, several members of councils, planning commission, and other members of the community, including Pacul Milliken and Lockout Harbor. Uh, then the planning commission, uh, well, there was a drop-in style public meeting, um, where Benchmark and, uh, I was there to hear public input from the community. And then finally, the planning commission conducted their official public hearing at their, uh, meeting last month. Uh, so, we have had quite a bit of input from the public. Uh, what that has developed into is, of course, the recommendations on the future land use map. And then, uh, a number of goals and recommendations under four different headings. Uh, quality of development, so things like how the, um, you know, looking at rules and regulations for how the town's gonna develop, which will lead to our next project, which is looking at a new zoning ordinance. And some things with code enforcement, um, how you're doing that, how we can improve those in the future. Um, quality connections, uh, talks about transportation and how you connect, you know, maybe with bike paths and sidewalks and trails, things like that to help people connect through the community, um, particularly to Pacul, of course, with also Blueways with the Pacul River and the kayak portals. Uh, and then healthy neighborhoods, that's gonna talk about, um, issues like parks and open space. And again, uh, cleaning up residential neighborhoods to make sure that they're safe and welcoming environments for people to live. Um, and then finally, attractive corridors, um, you know, the signage at the gateway is an example of that. Uh, streetscaping to improve the look of the community as people enter and, you know, make it more attractive for people to come here and wanna be here. Uh, so, those are the main areas that, um, we have recommendations for. Uh, you have a copy of the document again that was, um, passed out before the meeting. Uh, so, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for staff. We are recommending that you approve this on first reading tonight. There were, um, several updates and changes, some minor issues, uh, that had come up that we corrected in the document. Uh, there was also one specific request at the planning commission about, um, under recreational opportunities, identifying specifically like splash pads and dog parks. That has been added in specifically into the recommendations as well. Uh, so, we did address those comments that occurred at that meeting, so.
Motion to be approved on first reading, adoption of the, um, comprehensive plan.
Motion to accept, first reading, you consider it. First reading.
All second.
The comprehensive plan, uh, in a second, any questions? All in favor, all opposed. Thank you, Joe.
At your next council meeting in September, uh, we're hoping to have the video of the A V working. Um, and, um, Jason Epley with Benchmark Planning is coming to come up here and do a presentation on the master plan. Uh, they cover a lot more detail, uh, because it's technically a separate document, but it's going in the comprehensive plan.
Said first reading, approve the municipal services agreement with Duke Energy Carolina's a little steep.
Prior to doing this, I need to be all to determine what the rate is gonna be. The town currently has a three percent rate. Uh, the town, um, I believe it's with that three percent rate, you know, approximately two million dollars worth of revenue for Duke Power. Uh, the town currently gets, I believe it's sixty thousand dollars, um, a year from Duke Power there.
Is, are all these, are all these contracts ten-year contracts?
Sir?
Are all of these, the, does this have to be a ten-year contract?
That is what Duke Power has for everyone. I'm recommending that y'all go up one percent, which would be an increase to the town of twenty thousand dollars across all of the customers. Uh, and not more than that. Um, if you'll see on there, other communities are currently at five percent of the town Pacul. Based on the limited research that I was able to do, uh, between us and Inland, we're the only two ones that are currently at three percent. Uh, Inland did say when I reached out to them that when they have their next contract due, they plan on increasing it to five or six percent.
Is that, how is those percentages calculated? Is that based on population or usage or?
The, the total of revenue that Duke Power gets from the town Pacul's customers.
It's basically, we're adding, we, we already have a three percent tax on what they pay their bill every month.
When you look on your Duke Power bill, you'll see on there works a franchise fee. That's what this is.
That's what goes to the town. When, every month when you pay your Duke Power bill, it's a percentage of that goes to the town. Okay, you're recommended to.
Ma'am, I'm recommending that you go from three percent to four percent.
What I'm asking is, if we do that, will that, will the cost be given back to the customer?
The cost will increase, so your, 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 your franchise fee will instead be three percent, of their total amount will be four percent. So, your bill and everybody who, who has Duke Power will go up slightly for this. That is the unfortunate situation of the franchise fee.
And they plan to raise the, the, what they're charging us for streetlights?
They are currently increasing, uh, that was based off when Mark Cleveland gave a presentation at the Spartanburg County, uh, Municipal Association meeting. Uh, he said that they are planning to increase the, uh, street lighting from, uh, thirteen point one percent. Uh, it's my understanding, I could be wrong, but I, I, it's my understanding that y'all would use the revenue that you would get from franchise fee to offset the cost of the streetlights around town.
You said it's currently thirteen percent?
They're, they're raising it thirteen percent. Raising it from where it is right now.
What is it?
We currently pay, I believe, around fifty-one, fifty-two thousand dollars, um, for all the streetlights throughout the entire community.
What I'm asking is, how many percentage points are they raising it to?
I, I don't know.
The Duke Power residents pay the fifty-one thousand for the streetlights, from what I just read.
So, if Duke goes up.
From what I just read.
Yeah, that's what it says to be.
We, we, we get three percent, which is about sixty thousand. The streetlights are costing fifty-one thousand, so the Duke Power residents are paying for the streetlights in Pacul.
They are really, through the tax, they're, they're paying what we are currently being charged for.
Yeah.
Right, franchise fee pays for the streetlights in Pacul.
So, when Duke Power goes up, it, our power goes up and then our franchise fee goes up.
So, when Duke Power raises their, raises their fees.
Double way.
It's still three percent currently for us, even if they raise our fees, it's still three percent.
I would love to know what that spread is, because I wanna raise this as little as possible.
The only reason I'm recommending to go to the forum there is even though it's a sixty and fifty-one, fifty-two, um, one thing that the council had to mention in the past is adding more streetlights throughout the community. And, and I think it'll be prudent for the town to see more streetlights throughout the whole community. And to do that, it'll cost more to, to the town, and that's just passing back through the franchise.
This is a ten-year program too, I mean.
That's correct.
And what rate we do now, if we can use, will we do it again?
Correct. There is a section on there, if you'll see on there, that, uh, at any point in time, the town, the town does want to change the fee, they actually can. And, uh, it would, it's a hundred and twenty days, if you read on the contract, uh, that would take effect. So, if y'all went to three percent now, and then two or three months into it, you said, I wanna change it to four percent, you could, but it wouldn't take effect for four months.
And also too, anytime in between the ten years of Duke Power raises its cost again, our franchise fee will go up as well?
Our franchise fee is based on the total revenue that they receive in Pacul, so.
So, yes.
If they charge you more, yes, then.
So, yes.
But it's, I mean, if you listen to your franchise fee, I mean, I have a franchise fee where I live as well, uh, it's, it's, I think it's a couple of dollars.
But it just sounds like we could move, we would be getting twice.
I mean, if you think about the, the, the number of residents who have Duke Power, and if you raise it one percentage, you're getting twenty thousand dollars more for the, for. I don't know what your franchise fee is here. I probably shouldn't know that, but.
Three, three percent.
I know, but what you actually pay, like, for some people, maybe a top dollar.
I think it's depends on the, on the usage, yeah. So, if your bill's a hundred dollars, you're paying three dollars.
If it's twenty thousand, and we've got twenty-two hundred residents, just under ten bucks a year, say a year.
There's roughly nine hundred and thirty-nine houses being rented from the cop plan, so twenty thousand dollars is.
Twenty thousand a year. That's a twenty thousand a year.
What I tried, what I was looking at was the amount of revenue that we're currently getting on the, uh, from Duke Power is sixty thousand dollars. And so, if you take sixty thousand dollars, um, in the.
Add another percent to it.
Right, so it's less than a dollar, well, that, that. Right, so it's, it's less than a dollar, that, that actually sounds, I just, I hate raising any kind of, but it sounds like it's less than a dollar.
I mean, you can keep it where you are, and the town of Paclet would have the lowest franchise fee in, in Spartanburg County.
We already do, but I, e- even at four percent, we'll still be lower than the other municipalities. I'll make a motion that we raise it one percent for the agreement that we need to sign with Duke Power.
Okay, motion made to raise it to one percent, raise it to four percent, one percent. Do you second? You made it?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, equational, in common sense. Call it favor. Call opposed.
Ford two.
Okay. All right.
That's the first reading. It will take another reading in September. It has to be, Duke Power has asked for us to be in place by October first. If y'all need questions or want more clarification, please email me, so I can reach out to Duke Energy and make sure I get all those, those questions to answer.
Yes, can I?
I don't see stuff like that, I'm more of a project. No, just a regular.
Half the town is on heart, half is Duke.
You understand?
Your Duke Energy folks are only paying a higher percentage than the people here.
And what we'd have to end up doing is, is once Lockhart comes in play, then you end up potentially raising that one to match it all.
Is there a franchise fee for Lockhart as well?
One, three percent.
So we're just going to raise the tax, the franchise fee, raise the taxes on the, everybody through their contract, essentially, right? Because if Duke Power's at four, then we're probably going to.
Right, it's not time to, it's not time to.
Right, but when Lockhart does come in, we'll probably need to raise theirs too, that way we're not.
Another option that you could look, you could look at, if we, you've done the first reading now. Well, we can look at between now and the next reading, I can find out when that contract ends with, with Lockhart, and set it up so that we can do both at the same time. Because you do have that option, what I mentioned before, that you would make that motion, and then four months later it will into effect, and you could use that to tie it with Lockhart, so everything goes up together.
I, I think, I think there should, there should be more information provided, you know, so we have a better idea of exactly what we're doing. There's a lot of questions, I think, I think this was very uninformed before we decided to vote on this. I think there's too many questions before, I, I think, I think all council members should ask Mr. K for any questions, informations that they want, before we vote on this again.
This was sent to us and said that we need to have this passed by October, and they said let us, let you know what the rate's going to be. So y'all, please send me any questions that you have.
They sent you this on July twenty-sixth?
Uh, they sent it to me about a week ago, twenty-sixth, we saw.
I'd, I'd like to know what the, the increase on the lighting is. I mean, I hate to increase this, but we have the option of either having the streetlights go out, I guess, or we take it out of the general fund, which is taxed dollars anyways, so. Sounds like it has to be that, but to a degree, but I would like to know that spread of, of the change in cost for streetlights. I don't think the town wants the streetlights going out, but.
I, I think, once the citizens of Paclet realized that Duke Power and Lockhart Power tax franchise fees were paying the streetlights, and then yet we're going to raise it again, when they thought the town was paying for the streetlights all along, they're not going to be very happy about it, no longer with an increase. I don't think anybody will be.
Like I said, send me all of your questions, and I'll make sure that I get direct response from you.
Question on the Public Works Department? Any question, I mean, I do like that.
Yeah, I asked them to put it on there, I, I just have a few questions. So I know we bought a truck, and quit the trailer, lawnmowers, so on and so forth. The truck was bought through the procurement program, correct?
Correct.
And the lawnmowers, and the trailer, and all that other stuff?
All through state contracts.
Through state contracts? Okay, I, I couldn't find the vendor, Boiling Springs Smaller Engine on the state contract, DPS, I couldn't find that anywhere.
Well, that is how I ended up finding Boiling Springs, I went to the state procurement site and was looking at some of the stuff that were out there, and that's how I ended up getting to.
From the DPS website?
Yes, yeah, I, I guess it's the GPF, but I went to the state procurement site, and they had a listing of who has different contract with SCAG and Toro and various stuff like that, and Boiling Springs had the contracts, and that's the reason I went to them.
I didn't find Laser, the brand name of lawnmower that we got, I didn't find that, is that a, is that a X mark or is it?
That's a X mark.
It's a X mark?
Yes.
I didn't find that on the DPS either, so no vendors for that at all. And the ones that I did find for Husqvarna are still, excuse me, still, they're all in Charlotte and Charleston. I'm just trying to figure out where on the, can you send me a link to?
Well, the only ones that would fall.
Boiling Springs Smaller Engine, to where, where it shows them as a procurement option.
The only ones that would fall under that would be the, the last two items on there, which is the, the lasers, because they're over, over, with over a thousand dollars.
So, being that the entire thing was purchased at one location, is that, what do you, what do you mean, the only ones that would fall under that?
Well, the other items are under a thousand dollars in there.
Correct. But it was all purchased at one time?
While they're separated, it's.
Yes, it was all purchased at one time.
And how much did you pay for the trailer, because it wasn't on here?
Uh, I don't have that here with me, but it was approximately, I had, I had priced it out between that and T and J. And T and J was much higher than, than this, so I believe it was forty-three or forty-four hundred dollars.
When you say T and J, is that another procurement opportunity or something?
No, these were, these were, these were, no, these are just companies in, in the, in the area who have trailers.
Okay, so, so you, you stuck with the one that's listed as a procurement company, and these are the prices that they gave you through that, through the state contracts?
The Boiling Springs stuff is a state contract.
Right, these, these are state contract prices, correct?
Yes.
So all municipal bodies would pay the same prices, all state agencies would pay the same prices for these?
Yes, that's how I found Boiling Springs was through the state contract.
Okay, can you send me that, if you don't mind, some point?
Okay.
Just a link to where, you know, that's, I couldn't find it myself, I went all through the DPS system, and I couldn't find Boiling Springs Smaller Engine anywhere in there.
Okay.
The other, the other question I had is, the truck that we purchased, is the employee driving that truck home?
Is, yes, they're currently driving it home.
Why?
I, I thought maybe that'd be something to bring to council, you know, since it's a, you know, like, maybe some policies and procedures of the Public Works Department. It's not a police officer, so there's no emergency. Just trying to figure out why we put the extra wear and tear on a public, public works vehicle that's going to go through a lot of wear and tear, pulling the trailer and starting and stopping.
Part of the reason is, a lot of the times you'll have to pick up stuff from Boiling Springs, Smaller Engine Repair on the way into work, and there's various times that he has the trailer or has his equipment with him, and he actually lives up in Boiling Springs.
So he takes the lawnmowers home with him each night?
If there was some work that needed to be done on them.
Why is that not here?
Most of the times they stay here.
If there are things to be done on them, meaning he'll take them to the Smaller Engine Repair place?
Yes.
I don't, I don't agree with that, is that something that should have come before council? Why are we providing, and that's more like we're providing a company vehicle? And, and if he's an employee of the town and that truck is the property of the town of Paclet, he should come and go to work, just like everybody else comes and goes to work. And the vehicle or whatever he needs to do his job with is here.
All our officers take their vehicles home?
Those are, those are emergency vehicles?
Yeah, it, it, that's not in emergency. I don't understand. I, I do, yes, yeah.
I think that's something that we should have talked about ahead of time. You know, I understand, but this is a brand-new employee, so it was his first day at work, he drove the company truck home?
No, not the first day.
His third?
He's been here, he, he waited until about two or three weeks before he took it home.
Two or three weeks before it took home? He's been here four weeks?
Uh, I'll have to check back, I checked back on his first day, but he's, I think he's been here for?
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
He's been driving home for two weeks?
Uh, he's been driving in the last week, I believe.
Uh, I think it needs to be more than.
If that's what council wants to do, is have him drive in at state?
Is it, is it part of his compensation? Was there a contract, was it negotiated?
No.
Is his, his wage is based on that? What about the second employee that works on the public works? Does he have a, is his wage different either?
He has a, he has a rate that he banks.
Right, so what I meant was, when, when the position was advertised, was it advertising as grounds foreman, and you hired an individual for grounds foreman? Was that part of the compensation package to drive a vehicle home, or was that something that was decided later on?
That was not something that was listed on in D V O, the advertising.
So he took the wage that he took based on the fact that he was going to be coming to the town of Paclet, grabbing the vehicle on a trailer, using it, and so on and so forth. I'm just trying to figure out where, where we get, where, where you got to the point where the individual was going to drive the, the, the town of Paclet truck?
If council doesn't want that to happen, just let me know, and we can stop that.
We don't want it to happen, I don't. I, I, no.
Anybody, any, any, what's your? Will the council, yea or nay?
I'll say nay.
If he's gonna, uh, get repairs done on equipment, he would then take time off to drive Boiling Springs back on the clock versus maybe doing it on the way? Granted, hopefully it's rarer.
Can't do it after five anyway.
Hopefully it's rarer that we can need our equipment worked on, was that the process? Is that it?
The idea is that if he has something to do, or something to pick up, or something at the, the Boiling Springs, Smaller Engine Repair, or other places, then he doesn't have to drive into work, change out vehicles, and then drive back.
Has, has there already been repair on the equipment that was purchased brand-new?
I don't believe so.
So there hasn't been necessity technically for him to take it home?
Well, it was not just repairs, there's also items related for spring trimmer, or, you know, various items for the last day.
So he's picking up his own, purchasing his own material?
So how do we know that he's not even using, how do we know he's not even using it? I, I, that he, he should be coming, he's an employee, I think he should come and go to work, just like other employees of the town do.
If, if the lawnmower's broken, he gets paid by the hours, if the lawnmower's broken, he can take it during his time, scheduled time to work.
Okay.
To the repair place.
Just like anybody else, that, that's, I don't see why he, he is any better than any other employee than he gets a town vehicle.
That's fine.
Anybody have any problem with that?
Is there a policies manual or anything for the Public Works Department yet? Procedures, you know, any type of?
No, all we currently have is the employee handbook.
Okay, I, I think there should be some, some guidelines and policies and stuff for the Public Works Department. We've talked about this before. The, the issue with that is, is if there's nothing for them to specifically go by?
This is the first time I'm hearing about this, but yes, I think we should have this.
Can you work on that?
I can't.
Okay.
We may need to also upgrade, uh, policies, procedures for sanitation, so maybe, or maybe combine if it's the end goal.
Sanitation is the same as Public Works, it's one big department there, correct?
Uh, it could be in the future, but regardless, if you want to keep them separate, you can, but they're probably both going to be looked at.
So with that, probably a safety program as well?
Yes.
Included in the policies and procedures? Specific training, monthly, weekly?
That's like a.
Site-specific tasks, you know, things like that. If you need some documentation or some manuals or something, let me know.
Please, if you don't mind, and then if anybody's got some, I'd, I'd love for them to take, um, either some safety training that we give, I don't have anybody to teach them safety training here unless we bring somebody in. And so if you have a recommendation of somebody, the place that you work, I'd love to bring someone in to try.
There's apps that you can, they're free apps, that you can log, and there's up to five people can log in, and you can monitor their safety training progress, and it's all free, and I can send you that as well. And it covers specifically the, the, the items that they're going to be working with. You can set for the employee which specific training sessions they should take, and it's all free, no cost.
I mean, there's, there's, there's some stuff, like for instance, we've got a bird with a chipper, you know, when, when you pull up to a location, that you put the cones out so that no one's coming at you, because a lot of times they'll work it early in the morning, but make sure all the protocols are in place. So we've, they, they've seen it, they've signed off on it, they know what this stuff is, so we're doing everything possible. So if something happens in terms of lawsuit or court of law or something like that, we've done everything we're supposed to do. Thank you.
They know? Comments?
I have none.
Thank you, thank you for all the information and, uh, thank you for your work.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So you made, second adjourn, labor?